Welcome everyone to the April twenty fifth, City of Twolton Regular Council Meeting. Good evening. Tonight we'll start our traditional manner of the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Brooks is supposed to do it, but we'll give her a second. If not, we'll have someone else go ahead and do it. Give her a second. I think she's coming. All right, I'll go ahead. So place your hands over your heart if you desire and then I'll go ahead and take it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States, and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, since Counselor Brooks is still detained, we'll go ahead and move to announcements. First announcement is the proclamation for the Winona Grange. And I see a couple of folks here. I see Mr. Keeter Range. So we had a proclamation. Would you like to say anything first, Sam, about the Grange? Would you like to say anything about the Grange and what you're celebrating on the thirtieth and why we have the proclamation?
I'd be glad to Frank. Thank you for asking. On the, we're going to be doing one hundred twenty-fifth anniversary. And hopefully our current president is actually at the wall needed there to receive it. But we were to have it in two thousand twenty. And one hundred twenty-five years ago, in eighteen ninety-five, the Winona Grange was established here in Twolton. Two seventy-one stands for what Grange it was in the state of Oregon. And the building itself was built in nineteen forty. So this weekend, we have a free history and Frank, you are going to start it off. And we'll go from there with lots of speakers. We'll go downstairs. Sorry. And then I'll have the what we will offer free ice cream, free seats. And there'll be a community table for all the renters, their regular renters at the Grange. So we will see the whole city there. Lots of ice cream. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sam. And with that, Counselor Brooks is going to read the proclamation for the Grange. No.
I believe it was my honor.
Short-term memory, holy capoly. So Counselor President Grimes has a proclamation for the Grange.
Thank you. And I mentioned, it is my honor to read the proclamations evening. Recognizing the Winona Grange on its one hundred and twenty-fifth birthday. Whereas Twolton Winona Grange was founded in eighteen ninety-five. An oldest social service organization in the city. Named for the eldest daughter of J R C Tom, who died at a young age. Winona Grange members, they are gardeners or those who care where their food come. And are well known for garden and seed projects. And whereas originally formed to bring isolated farm families to. The Grange members become forces in bringing electricity and mail delivery to rural areas. The organization is recognized for its effective lobbying against the high rates, railroads, charge, transport grain. And other crops to market. And whereas meetings of the Winona Grange were originally held in the school. And then upstairs over a store, the present building was erected by volunteers in nineteen forty. Twolton's Grange has served as a community center, family members of all ages gather for community education and social activities. And whereas COVID forced the postponement of one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary event. Originally scheduled in twenty twenty. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council, the city of Twolton. That the city of Twolton recognizes the Winona Grange on the occasion of its one hundred and twenty-fifth birthday. Introduced and adopted this twenty-fifth day of April, two thousand twenty-two. Congratulations and happy belated birthday. You're a mute mayor.
You think we've learned this stuff by now, right? All right. Well, I look forward to seeing folks at the Grange on Saturday and it kicks off at ten, correct, Sam?
Correct. Ten o'clock and get there a little early if you want to park where you want to. Plenty of good city parking that's that we're very fortunate to have.
All right. I'm looking forward to seeing you there. Thanks. Next up on our announcements is Public Service Recognition Week proclamation. And Stacy will lead us off in this discussion. And then Counselor Brooks will read the proclamation.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Each year during the first week of May, the city of Twolton honors our employees to coincide with the National Public Employee Recognition Week. Recognize the variety of work that our employees perform. Our approximately two hundred employees truly are public servants who serve tirelessly for our community. And in this past year, the city of Twolton employees have continued to step up and remain flexible to ensure our community has serviced. The high level of excellence, whether as a member of our police staff, the library, the court, or the public work staff. Whom keep our streets and environment safe and clean, or those working behind the scenes in finance, maintenance, HR. Information services or other internal services, our employees really get the job done and should be recognized all of the, all of their amazing efforts. And employees can be counted upon to show up, act with heart and in a professional manner, which has lasting positive impacts on our community. And for that, we choose to recognize our employee for their dedicated service to the city of Twolton.
And with that, Counselor Brooks, please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank to all of our public employees. I'm really proud to read this proclamation to clear week of May first through May seventh, two thousand twenty-two. As Public Service Recognition Week. In honor of the public employees of the city of Twolton. Whereas public service is an honorable calling that involves a variety of challenging. And rewarding professions, including providing recreational services, maintaining public safety. Improving transportation, protecting our environment and performing administrative and management activities. Which are essential in if to efficient and effective operate government. And whereas Twolton city employees contribute significantly to the quality of life for the Twolton community. With their commitment to excellence, high ethical standards and diversity of skills. And whereas excellence in the public service helps keep Twolton strong, prosperous. And a wonderful place in which to live, work, play and volunteer. And whereas this commemora- commemora- I'm sorry commemoration provides an opportunity to express. Our appreciation for the many contributions public employees make to our daily lives. Now therefore, it is proclaimed by the Twolton City Council. That the week of May first through seventh, two thousand twenty-two, be Public Service Recognition Week. The city of Twolton and the council encourages everyone to recognize the accomplishments and contributions. Public employees. And I just wanted to say thank you from my heart. And before I was a counselor. I did not recognize the extent of the service and mission driven. Scope of work that so many different types of public employees. I all the way from our police department for our water folks to Stacy with HR and many others. And they really anyways are our first responders in situations that people don't think of. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of ours. And we have a really great city staff to be so proud of.
I totally agree, Counselor Brooks. In my conversations, I think many of you saying kind of. Conversations with residents where they'll tell you about an outstanding city employee, they'll tell you the stories, they rave. I I've never gotten a a disappie story about a city employee, you know, usually you hear. You always hear the negatives and people like to say negative things. But with our city employees, usually resounding, you know, these guys went outside, you know, went outside the box. You know, they were terrific. They helped me out and very much appreciate with our city employees. Is that, you know, they do terrific things. I know. I was joking at the tree planting, we had the employee who carries dog biscuits in her truck. And as soon as she sees a dog, she'll stop, pull over. Pull out the dog biscuits. It's a great interaction between her and the dog owner and the dog. But that's the kind of employees we have. So I very much appreciate everybody's work in this city to make us, this is a terrific city to live in. And, you know, we, we can't do without them. There's a lot of work as we saw back when we had the ice storm. You know, city employees scrambled and made it work, you know, that. City employees plus cert, you know, help clean up the city fairly quickly. Work with utilities to get the city back up and running after a pretty nasty storm. So. Joining your team, very much thank all the city employees. The big heart, all right.
And their fierce leader.
All right. So that brings us to public comment. Public comment is opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that's tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to counsel. This will be the appropriate time and I see our new executive director of the chamber here. Welcome. Are you Ailie?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Yep, I was giving a heads up to want to introduce yourself. So welcome.
Thank you. I've just finished my first big week. At as a employee, the CEO of the chamber and I'm having a fun getting to know everyone. We've had a big week last week. We had the key leaders breakfast and we had. A networking, early morning networking and we had after hours networking and. I'm getting to know the city and the citizens and the businesses and the my new board. So thank very much. It's a beautiful city and I can't wait to work with all you to see what we can do for the businesses.
All right. Can you do, I know I put you on the spot. You did a terrific job of introducing yourself like key leaders breakfast. So just where you came from, what you've been doing, you know.
Okay, I. Yes, I started out in healthcare marketing with Providence after college and learned a lot from Providence Health System. About basic best business practices and that was a healthcare marketing position. And as through my career, I ended up being recruited, the regional director of marketing. And had a territory from Coos Bay down to from from Spokane down to Coos Bay from Tri-Cities Long Beach. And did that for a while until I couldn't be the mom I wanted to be with that job because gone all the time. So I started looking for a more local job because I have three daughters that really, I love being a mom and and they're grown now. But now I'm replacing them with the grandchildren. So I ended up looking for a job that was more local and ended up as the senior center director in Lake Oswego. And there I became a member of the Chamber of Lake Oswego and the Rotary of Lake Oswego. And did a lot of things for rebranding the Lake Oswego Chamber. And I think that was what got me this job was because I really loved working with the Chamber in Lake Oswego. And so from there, I was recruited by a board to start up, but it's known as a relief nursery, which is a nonprofit that's. To stop child abuse and neglect by working with the parents and getting the children from birth through five years old into therapeutic classrooms. Social emotional bonding and attachment. And I started that up. It was a huge job, but so much fun. And was able to work for with them to for about six years to help them. Then I worked with, from there I went to two one one info and was working in the telephone resource or referral company. Teaching nine people through the state how to do relationship marketing. And now here I am here. So I've had a lot of fun, a lot of different jobs that I've learned a lot of different things. Was a consultant for quite a while for nonprofits. So.
All right. Well, welcome. We love to work with you. The, as you know, you and I have already spoken, I know you met Cheryl and already that. You know, the chamber and the city are very close in relationships. Sometimes we disagree, but we agree. But that I look forward to working with you in the coming years.
I look forward to it as well. And I'd like to get together with Counselor Reyes about the Latino Business Association. I I'd love to help with that if I could.
Okay, great. All right, well, welcome. Cool. All right. Is there anyone else at the poll center in the Zoom meeting who would like to make a public comment?
There's nobody at the poll center and weren't aware of anybody else on the Zoom call.
All right, thanks, Megan. Okay, that'll bring me on to consent. The consent agenda, those are items that consider routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone who would like an item removed or heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda tonight consists of two items. Item number one, consideration for approval. Of the work session at regular meeting minutes of April eleventh, twenty-two. And item number two, consideration of updates to the governmental agreement. With the cooperative public agencies of Washington County, EPA, WC Association to retain membership. Were anyone on the city council like an item removed or heard later tonight? Okay, I'll see any motions for that. So with that, do I have an adoption, an adoption, but a motion to adopt the consent agenda is red.
And move to the consent agenda is red.
I voted in a second to accept the consent agenda is ready. Any discussion on those motion? Be it none, Counselor Sacco.
Hi.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel President Grimes.
I.
I vote I also. Thank you. That brings us to our special remarks. Welcome, Counselor Rosenthal this evening. He is our rep at show council. And he'll be giving us his quarterly welcome card.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Really a pleasure to be here. I to be very sure, I wish I was with you in person. But, you know, because you probably have cookies and things like that. And so I missed that. I don't have any cookies. So I'll have to just to wing it on that regard. And so I'm very pleased to be here to give you an update. Two things. First of all, I want to introduce Eduardo Ramos, who is going to be running the slide deck. He's my posse advisor. He formerly was with Tigard, so he knows the area well. So he's going to be, he may actually have to fill in a little bit because I couldn't find some notes and there's one name that I forget. But anyway, I'm very pleased to be here. And the one I want to say at this outset is that. Of course, you know, it's nice to present what's going on in Metro. There's a lot of going on. Some of it's pretty critical stuff. We learn more from your, your critical comments than we from, you know, your head knots. So the more critical you can be, the more we will learn and the better we can, you know, provide service. With that, I will go to the first slide. This is a regional update for spring two thousand and two. Kids, that's the future. Pay attention to them. We recognize that our problems are real, but we also say that progress is real. One of the things, and I want to bring this very importantly, recently did a poll. Metro conducted a poll, particularly on transportation and all the issues regarding transportation, safety and. What we want to see and ridership and TriMet. But one of the things that came out is. Transportation is a secondary consideration. People want to get the homeless crisis. The housing crisis and the trash crisis resolved. And everything else is, is right now is secondary. So Metro is very concerned about moving this forward over that. But, but I just want to say that there are, there's, there's issues, but then there's what you might call local priorities. And it's something that's true throughout the West Coast. Anyway, next slide. So real progress. We are making progress. It's not as quick as some people wanted to see. But it's, it, you know, it actually takes a while to new housing. So we have four and fifty-six people have been placed into supportive housing. We have the thousand, over fourteen hundred households receiving rental assistance. Have seven hundred new regionally funded shelter beds. My understanding during this last spring snowstorm, we, we had some shelter beds. For virtually everybody, at least on the short term basis. We're going to continue to be adding more shelter beds as we get into June. These will be sort of long term. Washington County particularly has added a lot of shelter bids where they had few dedicated beforehand. So we understand shelter is important, but we are also committed as to making sure that people. Can move from shelters to and have the supportive services they need when they move into housing. And as articles have pointed out, it's, it can be rental assistance, medical assistance, it can be assistance with substance abuse. It can be assistance with so car serial problems or be behavioral problems. So it's a, it's a comp structure, but we are working pretty hard with the counties to provide those. Next. This is the gentleman who I couldn't find my notes and I can't, you know, and maybe Eduardo chime in and tell me his name. He was at the Arbor Lodge Wintersher and then he was provided, somebody met with invited him with. Sort of counseling and support. He's gotten job training. He's now moved into permanent housing. He's the kind of success that we're looking for. We know that if you just put people into housing without helping them. Some people who are on the streets are there because they have some issues that have to be resolved. Just put them into housing. And immediately those issues go. You have to be there long enough, otherwise they're going to be in housing in one month. The next month, they're going to be back out on the streets. So that's a real big party for Metro. And I don't know, Eduardo, can you remind his name?
Yeah, this is, this is Lonnie and he was featured in a KGW segment. A few like a month ago.
Okay. Thanks. Next slide, please. So on the housing bond, as you know, it takes, and I'm, and Twolton is in the process of doing one. It, these houses are complex because they usually have four or five different groups. There's the, the funny, there's, there can be a local. Private for profit group. There can be the nonprofit group. There's metro funds, sometimes transportation or into development funds. It takes a while. They all have slightly different regulations. So we have a hunt over a hundred eighty forms open. There's one we opened out in in Hillsborough. Of course, there's one in Beaverton and Happy Valley. So I think it's actually more than a hundred. I think it's closer to two hundred and fifty. We are in process of twenty-eight hundred more that are in design permitting or condition. Hopefully those will be done in the next year. A lot of them are scheduled for twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-two, early twenty twenty-three. And we hope to reach twelve thousand. We are. In terms of the number of units, we're ahead of our goals with. Upward fifty percent of the way in getting the number of units with less than fifty expenditures from the bond issue. Some of that is just sort of good because of the way financing work, but some of it has to do with staff. Pretty careful about trying to get the best deals. Next slide, please. This is sort of a representation, pre-construction, under construction and complete. There's another one that's complete out in, in the Hillsborough area right now and one in Happy Valley. But you can see that there's scattered out the entire region. Unfortunately, I don't know that the one in Twalas, and I'm not sure if that's the lowest thing there on the list. But it gives you an idea of their distribution. Maybe I have to move screen up a little bit. Hold on a second. And anyway, next slide, please. So the progress is providing support and that takes, that's a case by case cases. We really have to spend a lot of time. So. When we start, so for example, Washington County hit like about thirty million dollars supportive services. We've like, that has been like tripled. Now we aren't getting quite as much money from the tax as we thought we would, but nonetheless, they have a lot of staff. It took times to hire staff. So we have more outreach, more recovery, greater regional coordination, more train, more with. Education and training for jobs and so forth. It is a process. It's working. One of we wanted to make sure is that it was not going to be wide front in each county. And to be very honest, it was a little bit like pulling teeth, but in some somewhat. I wouldn't say controversial, but difficult to get all the three counties onto more or less the same page to say. This is how we're going to provide the services. We have local government agreements with the counties because the counties get the money. And then they give the nonprofits or they give it to their staff to make sure that it's implemented. And so we retain an oversight role to make sure. Not that they're identical, but that there aren't big cracks in each, in different counties. So that somebody's not tempted to move from Class County to Washington County or or Mount Loma County out to Washington. So that they, you know, it's really more of a holistic approach. Next slide, please. Keeping the region clean. One of the things that goes along with is the, of course, the appearance of trash and stuff and waste and stuff on the, on the grounds. And I'll reveal that sixty percent of the waste that people see is not related to the homeless camp, but forty percent is. So getting rid of waste and providing for food waste. So we have a big program that's starting to really roll out in about the next year. Is to get food waste composted and generated into energy. We've beefed up the rid patrol crews. So pulled them and added some additional ones with nonprofits. And so we've reached eight hundred and twenty-six tons of trash. And now, well, we were up to a sixty-five day turn during the pandemic. Now we're back down. Actually, we're down to two days. It's not quite evenly spread. It, you probably a little slow here in the, in the, in the outlines of the downtown area. It's important. Plus, and this is an important thing, we recently got, and so I'm going to encourage it to Wallace and to get your. Get you recon for anything you want to do in the short term. We got ten million dollars from the legislature. Basically clean up trash along the thoroughfares and the major right of ways. As you know, I five goes right through here. Some of this money was incentive to keep things cleaned up because of the work of, because of world track and field trials. World track and field trials are in Eugene this summer. Some of it was about that. But one of the ten million, one point eight is allocated for local jurisdictions. I, I can't give you the details on exactly how to apply, but encourage Twolton to do it. I guess. Hillsborough is already sending rigs. So, you know, get them all there hot, as they say. Next slide, please. This is, and I, I really can't put the colors mean, but it's pretty. You know, you can almost post this as an art thing, but this shows where the Ridwell. Issues are taking care of. And as you know, I mean, the biggest. The smaller city, I would say the medium sized cities, the twang, whether it's Twolton, Sherwood, Wilsonville. We have problems out. It's not nearly as serious of a visual issue as it is in Portland. So the bulk of the work is in downtown side, but there's still work happening everywhere. Next, please. So transportation. Now this, as you may know, is a very interesting and fascinating subject. We're in the middle of a, going to update the regional transportation plan of the. The M tip, you have the S tip and you have the whole projects. It's called planning for the future. We're going to update the regional transportation plan. I hope it's going to be. And we've seen a lot of changes. We've seen changes in technology. We've seen changes in goals. We've had greater asset equity. And we've also seen a very great change in people's behavior, which is one of the reasons we did this study. A lot of, one of the interesting parts of the study is everybody predict that more people are going to stay home and more people are going to work from home. But they all predict, and this is, you know, with, with a. Margin of error, that traffic is going to get worse. And so it makes her, why is traffic going to worse that her is staying home? I'm not sure I understand. So we have the regional flexible funds for local projects and we fix a regional impact. As you know. There is the Bernathy Bridge, which really affects people commuting to and from Twolton. That is, my prediction is that we'll, we're voting on that tomorrow. I have problems with it personally, but I believe it's going to pass because nobody wants to stand in the way of actually. Adding the third lane and redo Abernathy Bridge and we'd want to get that underway. Because this is a congestion problem. It affects a lot of people commuting over to our industrial area, our work, our work area. So that's a big deal. We're continuing to work on the, of the interstate bridge and on the, the north corridor around the, the north of the Moda Center. The interstate bridge, we've gotten some agreement from the state that they're not toll. The Abernathy Bridge, they come up with some plan to toll the entire area. And that, so in other words, it's not going to be a separate southern tier project. At least we hope that we have that agreement. So that's a, those are big, oh, and also the bridge, I want to mention the Boone Bridge. Everybody recognizes the Boone Bridge as a major, it is the major thoroughfare and it has congestion always a problem in the afternoon. If you're going south and not so much if you're going north. So there's going to be. not so much if you're going north. So there's going to be an added access and that, that is moving forward as well. And that, that's something that if us, because of course we have the BRT on shoulder, I'm so shoulder bus between Wilsonville and Tuolumne, uh, which is a great thing. And as you know about the interstate courses, recently been an agreement that probably transit will go into downtown Vancouver. And uh, so we'll cross the bridge. Um, and that, that's a recent decision, I believe that was just published yesterday. Happy to answer questions on these. It's a complex issue. Next. Uh, supporting the economy. Of course, you know, Met does a lot of things to support the economy. Uh, we have the convention center that's back operational, um, and you know, serving the kinds of entertainments. And we, of course, we have the new hotel and they pay, they've re, they've re-upped their bond rating, uh, because they've been having a better results and more people staying at the, at the hotel than they were thought. The Expo Center continues to be an issue of concern. It is an issue. It is a that's very valuable in many regards, but it also has a lot of cost and some old buildings that are going to need a lot of work. And we're in the process of a study to figure out what the next hundred years for the Expo Center is going to look like. Portland five is mostly reopening. It's a national reopening model. They've been very, there's going to be some problems. We have to do some sewer work on the schnitz. Of course, the zoo has been a real success. Lots of fun there. Of course, the program has been great. Uh, we have new polar bears. We have a new nut rossiris. I recently saw slides of doing dental work on our anastas. Like, uh, have you seen a drill the size of something you get from home? Pretty amazing. Um, you know, it's, I maybe, made me very nervous. But anyhow, so we have a new, we have a new baby orangutan. We have some new chimpanzees. Uh, so there's really some very nice things going on. It's really a lovely thing. Oh, and we finished the bond issue within the 10 years. It was a 10 year bond issue. Just finished the spring and it finished on budget. And it did all the things and, and more. So anyway, that's, these are things that are bringing up into the area. Um, which isn't to say that we oppose it, but we are not cognizant of the things that bring things out into the, into the, the wider area of the metro regions is the Riza Center in Beaverton and, and other facilities that are available throughout the smaller cities. It's, it's a part of your economy and bringing people into the area and giving them space. So then have to do their artistic creations and so forth and meet people at various levels. Next slide, please. Parks and nature. As you know, we're heavily used during the pandemic. Um, that will probably continue to be used this. Uh, there's a major focus on equity, which means it's going to be more focused on parks and, and areas, in areas where it is an issue. Uh, and also on transportation, getting people in from the parks and on education. We have, um, in terms of new acquisitions, well, we have the Shehalim Bridge, which was opened, um, oh, I don't know. Maybe it hasn't had the funding. It's open. It's out near Gaston. Great thing. It's about a thousand acres, uh, bikes and horse trails. Great views from the valley state. We haven't had too many of those. This last weekend would have been great. Newell Creek Canyon in Oregon City. It's right downtown. It has biking trails. First we have, we've added a bunch of ridge along the Clackamas River at Deep Creek, which connects with the Holman Parks and, and, and trails. Um, and then we've also added them, uh, no acreage, about 50 acres to the Killam Wetlands. And then of course, there's the local share grant for everybody to submit up projects, including, you know, extensions of trails. Uh, no, there's a lot of desire to connect, start to, we continue connecting these trails. There is never enough money. We've identified, well, I mean, you know, we have a limited amount of money. I forget what's led to bond, a couple hundred million, but we have identified probably five billion square foot of park lands that we'd like to acquire, but so we have to be prioritized. There, there's 24 regions. So make sure that Tuolumne and ask for its fair share of, of the local parks levy. Next slide. So this slide is just human interest. We need to create a region that works for everyone and that there's sort of a level, if not a nickel, but a level playing field for people in all the small cities and all jurisdictions. So that everybody, you know, has somewhat similar rules. So we're disadvantaging one group over another. So that's what the goal of Metro that, that's one of, one of the things I want to hear from people. So we want to make sure that local needs are met. As I've said many times, each local jurisdiction has its own needs, its own personality, its own characteristics, its own economy. And so one of the major is to make sure that we recognize those local differences and that Portland Metro down, and as I've said a couple of times, they don't do it natty, but there is a tendency to look at things a little too Portland centric. So I want to hear from you to the extent you want to make sure that they did, don't forget Tuolumne. And uh, so I, I want to be your voice in that regard. Next, last slide, please. So thank you for the time. Um, and I'm willing to come back and you want to hear more. And like I said, uh, critical issues more than applause is, is always a good thing.
All right. All right. Thank you, Council Rosenthal. I see Council Brooks has her hand up. Council Brooks.
Thank you, Council Rosenthal, um, for the comprehensive and um engaging presentation. And uh, I'm glad that you're awake for the presentations that you present. I'm just going to say that. Um, we today got some polling information because we were doing research on the parks bond. So it was interesting to me when you started off talking about um homelessness be concerned. We heard that today from the people that did the polling. Our city, however, transportation is still at the top of the list, well above homelessness. And um, even above affordable housing, which does hit the top, but um, I think they said that the difference between um, transportation and the next item was 15, 16% for quite a large gap. So I just want to reiterate that we here are still very concerned about traffic. Earlier, our mayor was talking about um, ideas around better um comprehensive app pricing versus tolling in ways to think about that. And we're very, very concerned about um diversion traffic. And there's just no answer that we've heard yet. And you know, it's not here already. So I'm just going to start off with that. Just for the local flavors and ask for it. I also want to say that in that same discussion, parks um, research, there was a huge interest in the community for connection of trails. And um, we are highly interested in connecting the trails from uh, you know, Wilsonville through here, those plans that we have and ways that we can get funding from you um, for, to get our funding around the trail connections is, would be really helpful. And it kind of coincides with that connectivity issue that we have here because of traffic in different ways that our city can be hard to connect in. And we are wanting to resolve that. Um, I appreciate your conversation around equity. And also just went to last night at the Armory for the first time going out in public. So um, I think that it was one other. Oh, I was also more curious about the, when you were talking about asking for funding for um, cleanup, I think it was. Can you tell us a little bit more about what that program is?
Um, I'll try and address all your comments. First of all, thanks for the, the heads up on the station. This does not surprise me. What we heard was polling region wide, of course, the percent, like I said, each small jurisdiction. I heard that in Sherwood, homelessness is less of a critical than transportation. And uh, and diversion, one of the things that I mentioned is one of the things we got a very strong commitment from ODOT on the Abernathy to make sure that they deal with the diversion issue and have money to deal with diversion remediation, if there are such things. I mean, you know, they have, their potential is to toll on the, the Tuolumne River Bridge. And I think that that's going to cause some problems. So uh, I, I appreciate that. The transportation out here is, is going to be a, a, a quite a bit more of a concern. Uh, we see it. Downtown Portland is a little matter. Um, I agree with you on the trails and connectivity. I'm, and I'm, I don't want to criticize our park staff because they do a great job, but I do think that they have not done as much um proactive work in the southern region here and, and even down in the Stafford area, which is my neighborhood, but not my uh, and I think there's more focus that they need to do on some of the trails in this area to increase the connectivity that we have, the Tonka Night Age Trail and so forth. Uh, and so I hope that uh, I haven't seen the review of the, I think they just got 20 or 30 projects proposed on this local share and I have not seen the list or had a chance to review them at point in time. And then you had one other point, and I think I'm missing what it is, Council Brooks.
Um, well, you talked about reaching out for funding around some kind of trash pickup program. And I was unclear about what that is.
Well, join the club. I'm still unclear too. Now that the, the legislature allocated $10 million to Metro, most of it's going to be spent on trash, particularly in the central area, but 1.8 million dollars is going to be at its local jurisdictions. I do not know yet exactly how they're going to, how they're going to ask for the grants. This, I just saw the memo on this yesterday or the day before. As to, this is how the money's going to be allocated. So my, there is going to be some emphasis on doing things quickly, whether it can be sending out people to make sure that the, you know, that you, the trash is picked up along the major thoroughfares, 99 and, and I, I don't know. I, I wish I could give you more details. Uh, we just, you know, this, it, it came estimated from the legislative session and they're, they're developing some lines now.
Okay.
So, and I'll jump, I'll jump, Councilor Brooks to add that uh, the immediate action that can be taken is I can connect you with uh, our WPS team to uh, take advantage of our Rid Patrol program. And those are the folks who are coming out with crews to our communities uh, to do the cleanup work. We have had a lot of success in Tigerd uh, working closely with their police department and helping identify spaces where cleanup needs to happen. Uh, so I can reach out to, to city manager Lumbo so we can um, bring that program more uh, as needed, Wallerton.
Thank you. I know this might not hold under jurisdiction, but one of the places that gets really dirty here, something that our community can clean up, the ODOT ramps coming on off the freeway into, onto Nyberg. Um, they just don't keep up with the cleaning there as well as the rest of our city seems to do. So um, anyway, I don't know if that would quite fit in there, but that is something that people talk about. It's very visible. It's our gateway in some ways to our community. So to have that bunch of trash there. And then we have such a great um, city staff that does such a great job picking up here. So, and then we have community volunteers that also have come out and pick up trash.
Yeah, I think the question is, and I don't know whether ODOT on a special allocation to deal with its ramps uh, basically statewide. But moving ODOT into a program fix for something like this is as you, so my guess is it probably wouldn't be inappropriate, at least for the short term, to have a particular city program to assist ODOT in its efforts uh, while they gear up to deal with this on, on a more systematic basis. But again, I don't think the rules have been written. The Rid Patrol might have a little bit more detail on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I agree. It'd be nice to get it cleaned.
Yeah. And I, I think it's something that takes keep up because it just, there's um, you know, it's also like bus stops. When we're picking up trash, there's lots of cigarette butts at bus stops where people are standing and waiting. And there's just this concentration of trash in certain places. Uh, people are standing. And so um, it needs a little bit more time. Thank you.
Council Reyes, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I just, I think that I wanted to just say that, thank you, Councilor Brooks for bringing up the, the transportation issue. And I know that you brought this up, um, Councilor Rosenthal, but I just brought, I, it was 30% uh, of what people, in, in our way that people believe that was the highest priority here in Tuolumne. So it is transportation. The, the, the second one was crime. And I know that um, you know, with um, if, if there's any, any issues or, or something that we can do to, to support that or, or help our, our residents feel much um, at ease that we're taking care of that. So that was another thing that came back on that survey. Um, and I know, I know it's going to be, I know we've, we've talked about this and you've said this, I'm going to just bring it up again. I still would love to see equitable, equitable money to um, have parks that are for families that are young and still have grade school children. Um, I mean, I just, I know you talked a little bit about that, but I just want to bring it up again in case there's some leftover money or something, or things can change or things can move uh, some action. I would love to see one of our parks be developed the way they, the community or that, that area in Tuolumne dreamt of having or dream of having someday. So those are just kind of the things that I want to bring up. Um, and um, because I, I love to see something, something that, you know, they put a lot of effort and time and energy and just felt like I will bring it, I just will bring it up until something happens. So, thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate the comments. And I think as I said before, of course, the first way is to make sure your parks department has these as priorities and then to communicate that with the metro parks department and then uh, to make that move forward as a priority for the, the, the local share. That again, as you know, they've, there's been some interpretation that some things are not fundable because of the grant restrictions, but um, you know, there are, there are ways to work around that, I believe. So I, I, I agree with your intent. Uh, it's a complex process.
Other questions for the counselor? All right. Well, of course Garrett, you know, I've got two. One is, you know, you sit on the Washington County Courtney Committee and you've heard the concerns about Metro's 2023 RTP work plan. And the fact that um, a lot of the cities for Metro being uh, kind of not listening to the feedback that's given to it from the coordinating committee. And that we feel the timeline for work plan is a little aggressive and allow for a lot of public input. Uh, and you know, you were just, I was in that interpretation is that this is basically a staff trip kind of a project, if you will, at Metro. And just want to see uh, how you address that. Cause uh, in the region wide transportation plan, and they're not listening really in my, in my opinion. They're not really listening to all the opinions we have here in Washington County. Uh, they're focused in on, as you kind of mentioned that, you know, Metro can be Portland centric sometimes. I just want your interpretation of how you see in the uh, RTP work plan rollout.
Um, I, Boobnik, I agree with you. Uh, and I'm in the process of reading the RTP, which believe me is not been easy. Yeah. It's, it's great for going to sleep sometimes, but um, I agree with you. And I think it needs more work than staff thinks it is. And I think on addressing local priorities in some instructive way is, is really one of the things that it's lacking. And so my comments are going to address that. I have a, I'm in the process of doing that. I've said I'm going to try and finish it by the end of the month. And then I have a meeting with the RTP people and say, all right, let's see if we can change these pair, some of these parameters. So we get more feedback from these other things. I agree. I don't know what to do. I, I, I don't have a solution yet for what we do about the time schedule. I think we shouldn't rush. I think there's, I think the RTP needs to be changed rather so, in very significant ways. And some of that has to do with local input.
All right. Great. That's what I like to hear. All right. After you, we have, we're talking garbage after you're done with your presentation. So uh, I definitely have to bring this up. I know you're well aware of um, Clackamas County Commissioners are talking with your, you and your uh, fellow counselors about this proposed rate increase for trash hauling, I would say, I should say. That proposing a 70% increase every year. I would tip in these, I should say, proposing a seventy percent increase every year for the next ten years or so. As Clackamas County, you know, their calculations basically said that's, you know, be a sixty seven percent increase in metro fee processing garbage over the period of seven years. And my question is, I know, you know, there is inflation and, but you know, here at the city of Walton, you know, we don't get sixty seven percent increases in, in taxes every year. We have to work within a budget and Sherlin has to be very creative in creating efficiencies and, you know, making it work with the budget that we have. And I know some US have increased with processing garbage, but the six percent increase per year that's basically baked in. And I have a few, you know, why can't it be morphed a little bit? What's, what's the plan here? Because I know it's going to be a budget hearing on May that makes a little bit more comfortable because I'm going to have to pay this to the people paying the garbage bills. Your Republic just has, you know, they have no choice. They have to pass it on. And, you know, we're the ones that are going to have to, you know, vote on the rate increases to our residents and we're going to hear about it, not, not Metro. We hear about their garbage rates going up and I got to be able to justify why their garbage bills can be going up seven or eight percent every year for the next seven years. The floor is yours.
Thank you. That's, well, the W PES rates are sort of complicated and we have additional expenses. You know, and, and there's some need to expand some of the, you know, some of the facilities. Did you get a copy of the, W PES drafted a letter in response to the Clack County Commission responding to that in which they said they thought that some of the, or they felt that some of the calculations were in error. And I don't have that in front of me, but I'd be happy to find it and send it to you.
I haven't seen your response. I've just seen their letters to Metro.
Okay, okay. I didn't know how widely they sent that out. Yeah, and I, I mean, I understand the, the point that you're making and I think it's, it's an important one. We did, we did get them to, to say that they're not going to change. You know, they were going to have like a twenty increase in the individual load, you know, scale house. And we said, that's really much too much. We don't need to do it. There are some additional programs. So for example, the, the, the food composting, which is eighteen percent of the, the bulk, which is, which initially is going to cost some money. I think a lot, well, the original proposal was to have a much greater increase initially, something like ten, ten or twelve percent this next year to compensate for some of the extra costs that came along with the, with the COVID, higher cost, more self haul and dealing with some of these costs. And the council said, well, no, we really think you ought to level it out so that at minimum that everybody knows sort of that it's going to be a flat increase. It's something that you at least can prepare for. But that doesn't answer your question. Why is it seven percent? And is that really justifiable? That kind of answers one of the questions of why it's not erratic. I will more, I will get you that letter which answers some of those questions. And I don't want to paraphrase them right now. In fact, I don't have them at the top of my head. I, I understand the issue that you have at seven percent. I think, I don't think it's a sixty seven percent increase. I think it's a little bit more. I think they maybe added them together in the wrong way, but it's still a substantial increase over seven years.
Yeah, we understand. I mean, what, you know, I was one of your critics, that you're Metro's critic about the, you know, the erratic, you know, rate increases predict. And next you know, like you're saying, you, the metro calculation of, oh crap, we need twelve percent. And everyone goes nuts. No one wants, you know, we don't want to, you know, do twelve percent, but you, you might have skipped on a rate a year before. So I certainly understand the, you, the predictability. You know, seven or eight percent seems kind of high or, you know, traditionally, you know, outside of this era of inflation, you know, it's like three percent. You know, around there where, you know, so look forward to seeing that letter. And that, you know, I just want to register my concern because, you know, at, at every time these garbage rates go up, you know, the seven of us have to be the one that, you know, goes to the community and we hear about it. And, you know, it's, folks just want to know why it keeps going up. And if, you know, they all understand cost of living, but I hear eight percent a year for the next year, you know, consider every, each year, they're going to be kind of miffed and, you know, what is Metro doing to justify that eight percent each year?
Yes, I, I mean, I can answer some of it, but yeah, some of it has to do with a recovery. It has to do with better wages and, and more benefits for half because we've taken the position to make sure that people have, you know, basically career choices as well as family wage jobs. That, my guess is that's about half of it. And I'll have to, I'll have to chase and see, but I'll, I'll make sure you get the copy of the letter that they, that W responded, which is gives more of the nuts and bolts, you know, as more gets into the weeds and I will make sure you get that. But I will, your concern is similar to what I've heard from other cities.
And I think at the date I have, I wrote down as day fifth is the budget meeting for Metro on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Just so I know what our timeline is to, you know, before, I don't know if that's the actual vote or is, is that the beginning of the process or the vote on the budget?
You mean for the, the overall budget? I think that's the presentation on the budget. We don't approve a final budget until I think it's high.
Okay. Yeah, because I know it's TPD on, you know, I know, you know, like I said, I know the seniors have concerns about the rate increase. You, you've certainly heard from Clackamas County Commissioners. So I look forward to seeing the letter and I know how to get ahold of you and talk to you, to you about this. So, you know, because I know, you know, we have pretty good respect for public. And, you know, when this thing hits them, they've eaten some rate increases in the past, but at a certain point they can't do it anymore. And so we're going to have to go to public and justify why their garbage bill is going up again.
Okay, I will, like I said, a letter and I'll work on seeing if, if I can get a little bit more clarity on some of the other. Like I said, some of it has to do with wages, but that's only a portion of it enough. I'll have to dig a little deeper on that.
All right. Any other question, Councilor Rosenthal?
All right. Well, you know, Mayor, I also, I know that you touched on the transportation and and I heard response, but I still think that when the conversation is about diversion remediation versus the framework that you had earlier with avoiding diversion altogether. And I was just wondering if you'd be willing to summarize that for Commissioner Rosenthal.
Sure. And earlier meeting today, the MMC Subcommittee on Transportation and Land Planning. We're discussing, you know, ODOT's, you know, tolling and that, you know, the basic gist, if you will, is, you know, the Oregon Legislature told that yeah, you need to fix two oh five and the way you're going to do that is through tolling. And that was a piece of legislation, you know, HB two thousand seventeen. And the clarification was given on tolling on another piece of legislation, getting the number. So our discussions today brainstorm for the twenty twenty-three session was how can we get true congestion pricing in the region? And discussions around the cities in Europe, you know, Stockholm, Oslo, London, where congestion pricing is region wide. It's not uncertain. So there is not a diversion issue because you can't divert because you're going to pay anywhere you go if you're within a certain boundary was considered, you know, congestion pricing. And we discussed this at work session, you know, that would take, you know, might make it a lot more equitable. It'd make it so that maybe even possibly more money is raised that in addition to fixing infrastructure that also could finance enhanced public transportation or maybe, you know, even free transit like you have in Europe. And bike pet improvements, what Councilor Brooks is mentioning is that looking at, going back to the legislature's name, is tolling the only way this can be done? And maybe you want to look at different ideas that work somewhere else. And the other thing that was brought up as a key point was other markets, not all, not all lanes are told on a tollway. It's usually maybe one or two lanes, but there's always usually one or two lanes free. And that's not an option here. Is that something else we, we circle back with on, with the legislature? So, yeah, I know this is not a Metro thing. It's more of a state thing and an outing, but Metro certainly has our, you know, a chair at the, you know, saying, hey, do we need to step back and reevaluate this or are we going to keep going down this road of toll, 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 and we're going to toll certain roadways and not the region? And all that's going to do is create diversion because I think you were in the same meeting I was in. You know, it, it bubbled up that there's a possibility that ODOT might toll two seventeen and twenty-six in the future to include that with I five oh five. So, you know, just taking a relook at what true congestion pricing is.
Yeah. I have to agree with you. Getting ODOT to have a broader view and realize that they have diversion. One of the things on the Abernathy, we did get them to agree as we said, it, they agreed to fund diversion event analysis under the VP, which gives them the flexibility of doing things with diversion as opposed to the two, one, one twenty-nine clause misses just to doing of the highways. So that's, that's they now recognize that diversion is something they have to, not only study, but I'll do something about. One, one of the interesting things, and I could have more to answer. I'll have more to answer, say Thursday and Fridays. We're going up tomorrow, well, actually it'll be way and spending the day with WISDOT and talking to them about the tolling plans they have in the Seattle area, which is, you know, a sort of a similar system. You have two freeways, one through the heart and one around the outside. And, and they're going to be talking about the technical aspects, about diversion effects and things like that. They have a, a little bit more constrained diversion system when, because it's very hard to get across the lake. But so I'll know a little bit more than what ODOT's really thinking. But it is a big issue because if you toll, there is going to be some diversion. And they're going to plan for it. I am not entirely convinced they really have thought through exactly how they're going to mitigate it. I mean, because here if you toll, well, you told the Boone Bridge, there, there is no diversion. So you don't have to worry about that so much. But if you toll further up I five, well, you're going to, you're going to, you convert to Boone's Ferry or you can divert to, you know, ninety nine or to Barber Boulevard and so forth. So what are you going to do about it? These are big issues.
And that's, that's the nightmare of where it can be. You know, what they, you know, when they put that first toll at the Boone Bridge, there goes ninety nine. Nine will now become the north south route. And can be further back up. So, yeah, with all these diversion conditions. And it would quite, you know, we had the same discussion as, is ODOT really going to have answers to diversion? Were they going to pull out their magic hat to solve these diversion issues? As I heard is they're asking the cities, localities for ideas how to.
Well, let's just put it this, they have not exactly been terribly, shall we say, far thinking in terms of how they approach this. So the more input they get from the cities and the counties and from Metro staff, the better chance we have of getting that's actually going to work for everybody. And they are, they do say that they're going to evaluate fifty nodes around the Abernathy Bridge issue. I don't think there's fifty nodes to look at, but, but they say they're going to do a serious analysis of that, you know. Remains to be seen exactly how they're going to do that.
Yeah. And it should be interesting if, like I said, with MMC, if we get any traction about, you know, maybe an amendment or two to give ODOT more options just than just tolling because, you know, what the legislature told them to do, that's what they're doing. You know, they're beating, they're getting up there, you know, trying to listen to us, but they were, they were giving their, their marching orders toll. And so that's what they're doing and that's what they're trying to progress, but maybe the legislature needs to take a second look at this.
Yeah, one of the things that the biggest fight we had with ODOT really was, was we said, and this is Clackamas and, and, and Southern Washington County says, don't, we don't want to, I mean, going to have to toll the Abernathy Bridge to pay for it in some sense, but we said, you don't want to toll if, if this regional tolling doesn't work, if it isn't going to be practical, it isn't going to do what we think it needs to do to pay for way for this infrastructure, then we want the tolling in the Abernathy and the bridges paid for. And it took a long time to get them to, to agree to that. But they, they have basically that they said the cushion tolling is, is a separate basic from cushion tolling. And so everybody thinks that there will be regional tolling of some sort. How much, what impact? That's really to be seen, but you know, we do know that there's going to be tolling on, on the interstate bridge just because the cost is going to be such that that not to pay off the bonds otherwise, how much that's going to be? Now, I did get a number from them. I think you heard it. They said something on the order of the Abernathy Bridge with about two, two dollars and sixty cents. I don't know why they have not looked at single lane tolling as opposed to all lane tolling. That I, I have not got an explanation for. So I can't.
I've never got an explanation why it's all lanes. Like, you know, being the East Coast guy, you don't tow all the lanes on the East Coast. It's, you pay, you pay for that speed, if you will, that you, you want to move faster, but it doesn't work in Bellevue because you look at Bellevue, the, the paved lanes don't move any faster than the free lanes during the peak hour or so.
And, and that, you know, having long time commuting in the Bellevue area, commuting from Calama up to, to Bothell for many years. Yeah, the fast lanes don't really go faster than the slow lanes. So maybe that's some of the, but I, I really, I've had a clear answer from them on that. So I agree with you there.
All right.
I wish I could, I wish I could answer more about.
Well, I don't know. It's, like I said, it's continuing issue and I think the twenty-three legislature is going to be hearing it because people in Portland Metro area, it's one of their key concerns at the homelessness, houselessness is transportation, traffic and congestion.
Yeah, okay. All right. I appreciate the comments and I appreciate the, the feedback.
Great. Anything else for Councilor Rosenthal?
I just want to thank you both because we're going to be disproportionate affected. And I, I know that's what you asked for in the beginning and that's what I want to reiterate.
Yeah, I mean, I see, you know, sixty fifth is jammed if the freeway is not going well. So I, I'm quite familiar myself, personal.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right. With that, well, thank you for coming tonight and thank you, Eduardo, for coming also. And we appreciate you taking time to do this. And our next item is a Metro item, you know, to get our waste standards in conjunction with Metro for multifamily housing. So I thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your question. Appreciate the, the feedback.
All right. With that, that brings us to general business and we have one item in general business. It's kind of a two parter though. We've got considerations number one four six six dash twenty-two and resolution number of five six one two dash twenty-two, adopting Metro's regional service standards. And I believe this will be kicked off by Lindsay. Welcome, Lindsay.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So it's always nice to follow Councilor Rosenthal. And just a quick note, we are, the two cities are the Washington County Technical Waste Shad Committee. And so we have a meeting in a few days. We'll be hearing about that one point eight million cleanup fund. So hoping we can take advantage of that and we'll keep you posted on how that goes. So that'll be some good stuff coming up for us. So we are here again to talk about Metro. And so like Councilor Rosenthal said, the Metro was there to try to make a good place for everybody and have everybody have the same kind of standards and a regional approach. And so we're looking at the residential service standards that Sarah Kirby and Pam Keen talked about a couple of weeks ago. And again, that just is a refresher, you know, as part of the regional waste plants coming out from Metro and goal ten is to provide regionally consistent services for garbage recycling, recyclers and other materials. And one, apparently there's two we can do this is adopt both an ordinance and a resolution to adopt these standards. And again, these standards are looking consistent service levels, so minimums levels to get the trash cleared out and recycling every week for our single family homes and multifamily condos, rents, those kind of things. And then regionally signage, bin coloring, just to make it easy. So we'll move from place to place in the region. The bins will same, the signage will look the same. It'll be consistent. If you move, know where things go. So the ordinance piece will be to apply to resident customers, meaning landlords or developers. So if you are a landlord of an apartment complex, you need to make sure that your apartment is being serviced at a regular rate. And so by into the code that can hold those landlords and developers to that, to that standard. The resolution is required for repub services or franchise waste hauler. Anything that the franchise has to come through resolution. So that's why there's both an ordinance to go in code and then a resolution to go towards what public is going to be responsible for. And then a resolution to go, um, towards what public is gonna be responsible for, um, in the end. So that's why we're here today to have kind of a two for one, um, from council tonight.
All right, uh, questions for Lindsay? Pretty quiet, Brooks.
Well, I just have a comment, um. I just wanted to say, and I guess it's sort of a question, I just wanted to know the conversation that we had around. The, um. Development, uh, land use considerations around the apartment buildings and there was a lot of discussion around. Um, overflowing garbage and regularity of pickup. So this particular ordinance should, um, be able to help with that, right? Mine kind of thing.
That's the goal, yep.
And then I will also say, I think that some of the recycling, even for myself, I'm. It can be confusing, the rules change, what numbers on the bottom of your plastic thing or whatever. And then I imagine going from place to place, um. As a person living in apartments or large, um, unit, uh, multi-unit complexes, I imagine it's apartments and condos. Um, that, that, that would add confusion as well to not have. Um, the colors like, like have at my house, so that's just for ease of use and hopefully, um. I just know from myself, from what I understand, the better that we are at recycling, the more efficient the system is. Because it actually goes through instead of having it offloaded and contaminated and things like that.
Right, exactly. The contamination rate is one of the best hurdles for recycling, because you know, you go to a whole container that's contaminated, usually the whole. Ben will end up going to the garbage, because the sorting's hard. And so hopefully this new signage and color coding system will help with contamination rate.
And then do we have any information on our website around preventing contamination for informational use? Because it feels to me sometimes hard to keep up with.
We have some, uh, could definitely probably use some updating, um, Washington County appreciates when we can. Cause they've done a lot of work on contamination and educational materials when we can direct folks to from our website to Washington County. So again, it's all consistent throughout the county, um, so present updating, um, but there is some stuff there.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll update it as we get these new things into place, so it'll link with metro too. All right, great, thank you.
Other questions for Lindsay, Council Reyes.
Yeah, thank you, Council Ruth, it kinda, you and I kinda like, because I was thinking the exact same thing. I have a hard time, um, distinction what's, what's gonna contaminate what and I don't. I try my best and look at the number, I Google the number and then I'm like, can I put it in this bin or maybe not? Or so I have a bit of a hard time understanding that. So I'm hoping that whatever we have out there will help, um, people are not, um. They don't Google or anything like that, they just think anything. In fact, I just heard from, so I had to correct someone who really, I mean, highly educated person. Not to put one of those pizza boxes, uh, in, in the recycle bin and that was like. Two weeks ago and I'm like, what are you doing? You're not supposed to do that. Well, it's, you know. He's like, uh, no, I can put, I'm like, no, you can't, it will contaminate, uh, I mean, I had to educate one on that. And these are people that I consider, you know, pretty, you know, knowledgeable about things and they want to do good. They just, there's that confusion, so I think there's gonna be a clear way of explaining people. That, um, that is not, you know, the contamination piece, because I think that's really. Like you say, it's the biggest thing, um, we have come to at the time to a Latinos who talked to us about it. And really changed my whole mind about everything. I'm like, wow, I've been doing it wrong all this time, so. Um, and it's like two weeks, two years ago or something, you know, so I think that that would be very useful. Um, for, for everybody to understand the different. What needs, you know, the contaminant piece, I think that's a big one versus, you know, because everybody wants to do the right thing, I want to do the right thing. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm confused and it was constantly, so.
It really does and those pizzas are so, the number one contaminant, I think, is the confusion around pizza boxes. So hopefully with this, uh, county and other folks will be coming out with updated materials and additional pieces. And especially with all the changes coming down, so you aren't alone for sure in the confusion, even, even the people who do it all the time.
Yeah, thank you.
You're on mute, Mayor.
Keep doing that tonight, geez. This is gonna get to our, you know, coming about meeting in person again, possibly, so don't have to worry about this anymore. Um, two questions for you, Lindsay. One is, these are the minimums, correct? We incorporate this into our, uh, into our code, but, uh, I think Council Brooks and Council Reyes were alluding to. Um, you know, we, we've heard the stories about, you know, the bins at the apartments overflowing. Now, this will expand capacity and have some more standards, but I want to make sure that we have the ability to go above and beyond. If you're more apartment complexes where, where the landlords of the, uh, container area is not big enough. Or it's picked up, you know, as often as needed, that we can enhance these regulations up of what Metro recommends.
Yes, absolutely. So these are the minimum requirements and, and they are, Metro is working. I'm guessing it'll come out sometime in the next year or two about the actual enclosure measurements themselves. That is the kind of the next step in their process and so when comes out, we'll likely come back to adopt some of those enclosure measurements. We'll then, um, go towards like new development and things like that when folks are redesigning. Um, so that's kind of that second half of that, but yes, we can absolutely go above and beyond.
Okay, because that, yeah, I've had conversations, you know, with staff at Republic, where, you know, their drivers. Uh, sometimes come up on a, you know, you know, a nightmare. Of stuff overflowing and their drivers do it great, I would try and give them the truck and get stuff out of there, but. I just want to make sure that, you know, as, uh, possibly more multi, you know, family residential comes to the city at twelve and that. You know, that we don't keep hearing, uh, concern being, uh, garbage pickup and that the, you know, the, the bins overflowing and the inability to recycle, that's cool. Second thing is just to be devil's advocate, what if we didn't adopt this and we just, um. Uh, didn't incorporate it to our code, because I know we had a item, my, one or two years ago, I think it was the food scraps. Where, uh, we were, you know, if we didn't incorporate those, uh, requests, that there was a financial penalty that, you know, potentially could pay. Uh, what's the, uh, impact if we say, nah, we're not gonna do this?
Right now, a mandate, so like our business food scraps was like a mandate for Metro. Um, there, there's some things where like if funding tied to it, Metro could withhold some funding if we didn't comply and then, you know, kind of a song and dance. Technically, we don't have to, um, if want to, there won't be, um. An immediate kind of funding repercussion like there was with business food scraps.
Yeah, and the staff's opinion that, you know, adopting these standards in the best industries of the city and residents?
Yes, absolutely. Might as well have a minimum service at least so that everyone's getting, getting the same thing, no matter where they live in the city.
All right, other questions for Lindsay? As Lindsay mentioned, this is kind of a confusing one, that we have to do an ordinance first, I believe. And that's, you know, first and second reading, and once we do that and approve that, ideally we approve that tonight. Uh, then we have to do a, do a separate resolution, which is, uh, which applies to Republic's franchise. So it's a two-step process here, kind of like we've done sometimes with annexations. So, uh, council, uh, discussion on the ordinance. Any questions on it? So in order for this to move forward, we'll have to do the typical ordinance thing where it's, uh, first and second reading by title only. And then if it's unanimous for both, then we don't need a third reading.
I'll make a motion for first reading by title only of ordinance fourteen sixty-six dash twenty-two.
That's second.
I got a motion second for first reading by title only of ordinance number one for six, six, dash twenty-two. Any discussions on those motions? Seeing none, uh, Council Brooks?
Hi.
Council Reyes?
I, I, I had something to say in my discussion of the same thing. Um, I'm wondering if we, um, if we adopt this or we pass this ordinance. Can, uh, people still use, uh, and I just want to clarify that, because I don't want to confuse that other, is it Ridgewell or something? Ridwell, the other company, can people still call them or use them and everything, something like wires or. Things that are not recyclable or they're not, um. I mean, I know we've talked about these guys, I just want to clarify that, I want to be, I want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding what we're. What we're passing here, so, um, if, does this would take, uh, I guess. Would not allow someone to say, I'm gonna call this company and pick up this, I don't know. Computer that doesn't work anymore or, or like light bulb or batteries and things like that.
Right, so this, um, is separate from all of that. This is just essentially the service, like how many times a week are they getting picked up? We, like, you know, how many, the enclosure, yeah, so that is separate. That we will be talking about the kind of expanded recycling program, um, soon, though.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Yes.
You're okay now?
Yes.
Okay, no, that's the time to ask, you did a perfect time, so Council Brooks?
Hi.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Sacco? Council President Grimes?
Hi.
And I go, I also, as you can have a special.
Thank you, Mayor, and ordinance implementing residential service stands for solid waste and recycling.
All right, I have a motion for a second reading.
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only for ordinance number fourteen sixty-six dash twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion as second for second reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, six, six, dash twenty-two. Any questions on those motions? Seeing that, Council Brooks?
Hi.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Sacco?
Hi.
Council President Grimes?
Hi.
I vote, I also, Sherilyn, please.
Thank you, Mayor, ordinance fourteen sixty-six dash twenty-two and ordinance implementing residential service standards for solid waste and recycling.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt.
Remove. Second.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance number one, four, six, six, dash twenty-two. Any discussions on those? All right, Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Sacco?
Hi.
Council Brooks?
Hi.
Council President Grimes?
Hi.
I vote, I also, it's unanimous, so it passes, all right. Now, the resolution, do we need any discussion on the resolution or just keep rolling? This is, just ties into Republic's, it ties into Republic's franchise agreement with the city.
Yes, so I think we just keep rolling.
Keep rolling. So resolution, we don't have to do a roll call or anything, so, uh, uh, how do people feel about resolution number of five, six, one, two, dash twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve, is that necessary?
Yes.
Okay. Bridget, you want to second me?
Oh, second.
All right, I got a motion as second, I'll do roll call anyway, just because we do it all the time back. We're so used to do it, so motion is to adopt resolution number five, six, one, two, dash twenty-two. Uh, Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Sacco?
Hi.
Council Brooks?
Hi.
Uh, Council President Grimes?
Hi.
And I vote, I also, uh, the resolution is so adopted, thank you, thank you, Lindsay, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
All right, so that brings us to, uh, nothing was removed from consent, let me just go back up to my agenda here. Uh, council communications, so as Council President Grimes meant, uh, during work session. Uh, I wanted to do a quick roundtable on how people felt about, uh, bringing city council meetings back in person. Uh, you may be that, uh, a lot of the cities around us have started doing in-person meetings again. Uh, some folks are doing, you know, every meeting is in person, uh, the MMC. Is gonna do, uh, one meeting per quarter in person. So still, you know, keeping the Zoom thing, uh, alive and well, because the expanse of all the mayors in the region meeting. Uh, but I just wanted to put it out there and see how people felt about, uh, in person again. Uh, is that something we want to do and if we do, when you're comfortable with it, uh, when I'm talking with Sherilyn. There's an idea that, you know, our new, uh, city center, city operation center out on Herman. Uh, might be a good place for me, because a little bit bigger room, uh, rather than doing it in the pole center. Uh, so we have some options, but I just want to hear what people think about getting back in person.
I'm excited to get back in person, but, um, if I say, I, I actually like the idea that if I travel, um. I can stick it in, uh, in the meeting, so maybe a hybrid style. I don't even know if that's possible or not, but I'm excited to see everyone in person and. You know, I do miss that, uh, that, um. Commodity or the kind of socializing part, uh, so I really enjoy that and you all. So I, I don't mind, but I do want it to be provided in case I have to travel or like. Um, I'm at the office stuck and I can do a hybrid.
I think Sherilyn, that's part of the new state law, isn't it, that you still have to have. Entry for remote access to a meeting for the new, that's the impression I've gotten.
Yeah, the legislation says that if there is opportunity for public comment. Have to have the option for, um, hybrid, although it doesn't require video. It can be called, can be telephone call in as well. And I just wanted to mention that May sixteenth is our first budget committee meeting. And the plan is that to be in person and it will be at the new, um, twelfth and third center. Out on Herman Road and we'll send more details about that, but that might be a really good opportunity for you to take a little twiddling. And to kind of see how it is and get your feet wet on, um, in person.
I think, Council Sacco, you had your hands up?
Yeah, thank you. I, um, I share Council Reyes's, um, sentiments. As a newer counselor, um, I, I, there's some of you that I have not really met and seen, um, which. I think is, um, difficult not to have those, you know, those really, those relationships. We don't talk before the meeting, we just come on, do business, I don't know you. Uh, outside of these meetings and, uh, and I think that, um, you know, that, um. That maybe doesn't make us as strong as a council, is that what if we did have, um, more of those, uh, relationship building? Just interactions, just, just normal human interactions that we're missing out on. Um, and so I, I also, however, um, would appreciate if, uh, you know, I am traveling for business and I, I. I have opportunity to jump on a Zoom. Um, and so I, I love that aspect as well to have some sort of hybrid, uh, hybrid model. That would support, um, both a busy lifestyle, but also wanting, um, those, those human interactions. That, that I feel like I'm missing.
Okay. Comments? Bridget or Council President Grimes?
Well, I basically agree and agree and agree, so that's, um. I'd love to come back to everybody two times in three, even one time a month, if two times is too many. And I love this, you know, especially, um, as we talked about tonight over, over again, the way traffic goes. There's always a possibility that one or more of us may end up being stuck at our place of business. And unable to get to where we need to be by the time we need to be there and it's nice to be able to have that option. So you don't miss a turn of the meeting or the work session or discussion thing in traffic, so. I'm all in, love to see you guys, so just let me know.
Council Brooks?
I'm good, I'm, uh. I'm mindful if there's anyone that has any, um, concerns. I'm good. I'm, I'm mindful if there's anyone that has concerns about their own safety or safety of their family. I want to be, you know, conscientious of that. And the other thing on the other side of that is I'm really grateful that I serve on a council that I'm confident that people are taking care of themselves and each other and, and that I, you know, feel confident and comfortable being together during a pandemic, during the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. So, so that's a pleasure. I won't be in town for most of May, so I'll be able to be there for breaking in the new building, but enjoy it. And, and I would say some of my committee meetings, but there's a lot of regional and some of them are not going to go back to in-person. There's a new normal in some ways. And as much as I like socializing, I do think that we were able to get an amazing amount of business done in this virtual way. I'm really grateful for the technology and that we were able to keep business rolling, even during the middle of the pandemic. I mean, it's been the main focus of this term and, and the city has kept, kept moving and done incredible work in this list of accomplishments that we went over here last month was astounding. So I just want to, you know, as much as it's great to see everybody, I, I don't necessarily agree around, I think we've done a lot of really, really good work and I think we'll continue to it, however, whatever format we're in. So, and I appreciate that that's in a council.
Next, the meeting that Counselor Sacco and I were in for the core opportunity of reunion zone was in person. And what was nice about that is that, you know, hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer was down on the tables. There were masks available for folks who wanted a mask. We weren't on top of each other. So it was spread out. So I'm also kind of excited to meet again in person. So we have two counselors who aren't here tonight. So I want to make a big decision tonight. But Sherlin, you know, might be a good test drive on May seventeenth with the budget hearing to see how it feels and see if that room feels comfortable. And that gives Bates and Sherlin a little bit of time to figure out how to do this. If we implement it sometime, you know, late summer or something like that where we switch gears. So that they don't have to rush and do it. But it sounds like folks are amenable to it and that we'll see how it goes on the seventeen. And then when we have our full council, we can affirm decision passed on to Sherlin and she can figure out how to make it happen. Cause I know one thing that, you know, I, I've heard from staff, city says loved that they didn't have to stick around at night. I could do this home, but that would change. But, but you're right. I mean, Kristen and I were joking at the Urban Room meeting. That was only like the second or third time we've seen each other in person after two years. So it's kind of weird.
Yeah, definitely the setup and take down of, of games has been much easier on staff, I will say, in May sixteen, Monday, May sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, sounds like we're all pretty, oh, go ahead, Bridget.
I had, we're still doing announcements, right?
Yep.
I had a couple. First of all, I wanted to, we went out and celebrated Earth Day, the Twelton Sustainability Network. And this year we were able to partner with the city. And the new group started called Eco, I think it's called Eco Wise. Maryland over at the pole center started. And we picked up a lot of trash. There were a lot of students there. I also wanted to thank student leadership because they brought forth a climate plan for the school system and met with Representative Bonamici. There were, who's been a leader in the Climate Action Plan nationally and had a great meeting and they've just been showing great leadership. And so I wanted to give a shout out to them. And then I also was over there at the, in an in-person meeting with Chief Steel and leadership from Milks Club that donated to the police foundation today. I wanted to thank them again publicly for their donation that goes to help our service dog, Tony, who is there as well, community engagement programs like Shop With The Cop and things that the police foundation support. And always, as always, our officers are great and it was a little difficult because I am going to see the various story to Chief Steel go. I think I'm be more sorry to see him go than he is sorry to be enjoying his summer, but and I feel like I had one other thing, but it is, again, I just want to acknowledge the water, clean water, where the Water Awareness Week and you.
Any other comments or comments, council comments?
Can I just put on record and if anyone out there is hearing us, I just want to thank all those thirty-plus people that took their time to meet with us and go over the questions. There were tough questions and answers and there were, it's just want to thank you all at once, because I feel like it's just, I, I can't believe how many people really wanted to be part of this committee. I mean, I just were well, not in a, in a bad way. It's like in an amazing way that our community was just willing to, to serve. I mean, this, it's a, it's going to be a, a very commitment from, from those that were selected. But I want to thank everyone. You guys were all wonderful and fantastic. And, and thank you for serving our, to serve our commu, our community. And yeah, we, I just want to say that because it was, I, I couldn't believe it. There were so many new people that I'm not met ever. So thank you all. And I hope you all have a wonderful night, but that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Anything else?
I'm sorry. I have one more thing too. I remembered it. I'm sorry. With the eco group. Well, first of all, I'm so glad that Counselor Reyes said that because I want to thank everybody as well. But I did want to, because we had talked about this evening that the Eco Wise Group, one of the things that I'd be doing is taking a tour of the recycling center in Wilsonville. And they're going to have a speaker lunch. And they're also going to be doing a thing called forest bathing and learning about that. Was sort of a eastern kind of vision around outdoor therapy experience. So and a way to enjoy the environment. So I just wanted to mention those couple of things because it's an exciting new program and opportunity to connect with community that is going to be great for our city. So and I didn't know if you knew about it. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Right. Anything else? All right. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn evening?
So moved.
Also a favor, just raise your hands. We won't roll call. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. I think I got the sniffles or whatever, Council President Grimes got with our tissues. Have a great evening. We'll see you next time.
Bye, guys.